Call to order the North Aurora Village Board meeting of Monday, November 4th, 2019. We'll open with a silent prayer meditation. Pledge of allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Our roll call. Trustee Gaitley.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Dofino.
Here.
And Mayor Berman here. We have a presentation this morning, this evening. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Jamie Wilkie from Lauderbach and Amen, who's going to talk about our audit process that was recently completed as of May 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. So we do have four documents this evening that we'll briefly go through, and then I know later in the agenda, Bill will be covering some of the actual financial highlights from the audit. So my presentation will really focus on those four key documents, what kind of the auditor's results were for our testing through the audit phase, and then certainly open it up for any questions that you might have for me this evening as well. So we're going to start with our auditor required communication, or what we call our SaaS 114 letter. So I'm going to let Bill help me navigate here, sorry. That's okay. So the SaaS 114 letter is an annual required communication directly to the board, where we are required to communicate items such as any disagreements with management, any significant findings, as well as significant material adjusting journal entries. I'm happy to report this evening, we had none of those types of findings or required communications. So what we would call basically a clean communication letter to the board this evening. I do want to thank, obviously, Bill and Mandy and the rest of the team here. I think a clean communication letter is evidence of the work that they put in preparing for the audit. To come into a village and have no significant adjusting journal entries, quite frankly, we don't expect. So I wanted to thank Bill and his staff, really, for all of their hard work in preparing for the annual audit. It is always a very clean audit process working with them. So thank you, Bill. The second document we will cover is what we call our management letter. The management letter is our opportunity on an annual basis to provide any recommendations, best practices, new GASB, or Governmental Accounting Standards Board pronouncements that we feel might have a significant impact to the financial statements. Being that we had a very clean audit process, we have no new recommendations for this year. So within the management letter, we have provided simply an update to the prior comment that was provided. That comment did relate to a governmental accounting standards board, or GASB change. GASB has been very active as of recent, really coming up with new mandates as it relates to financial reporting for governments. And so within this audit document this year, the village was required to implement what we call GASB 75. And GASB 75 related to the idea that we need to measure the future potential liability for the village related to retiree healthcare. So any pension participant in the state of Illinois, as the employer, you are required to allow retirees to piggyback on your health insurance plan. So even if they pay 100% of their premium, the idea is when we have retirees on the plan, it in theory inflates the cost for the entire plan as a whole. So the village undertook an actuarial study to determine that liability in accordance with GASB, and we have fully implemented those provisions in this current fiscal year. So again, no new recommendations, and the prior recommendation was fully addressed during this audit cycle. The third document we'll cover is the actual comprehensive annual financial report that is the largest document in front of you. I know there's a lot to take in in that document, really a significant amount of numbers and disclosures. So what I want to do this evening is briefly just talk about each of the sections and some of the key items, and then, as I said, I know Bill will kind of get into a few of the numbers discussions as well. Being that we had a very clean audit process, and that the village submits to what we call the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, you'll find on page 10 of the document, a copy of that actual award that was presented for the prior fiscal year. So we have again submitted this year's document. This is another independent third-party review of the annual audit, and really the highest level financial reporting we can have for any government entity. So the village does participate and has been awarded this, so I wanted to make sure we pointed that out this evening as well. The audit opinion can be found immediately after this on pages 11 and 12 of the document. For any government entity, when we come in to do our annual audit, we really have kind of a twofold goal. Number one, we are hired to ensure that we can provide an opinion that the financial statements as presented are in fact materially correct or accurate. As part of that process, then, we are also required to assess the internal control environment. So while we are not required currently to provide a full opinion on internal controls, we are required to take a look at all of the processes and procedures that the village has in place. Do we feel a sense that things are operating in the manner they're intended to? And then certainly in that first communication letter, if we had any findings, we would have to report that to the board as well. So being that we had no findings, overall, the village was issued a clean audit opinion, or what we call an unmodified opinion. And again, that represents that the financial statements as presented are materially correct, and we have no other notations of findings of concern. Immediately after the opinion, on pages 13 through 24 of the document, I just wanted to point out this section because I know the document is rather large. Pages 13 through 24 encompass what we call management's discussion and analysis. This section, as the title indicates, is prepared internally by management, and really intended to be the executive summary to the audit. You'll find a lot of high-level discussion on results for the fiscal year, discussions covering major capital asset acquisitions and long-term debt activity, budgetary comparisons, and really some nice charts and graphs that kind of help take the 200-page financial document and condense it down into an executive summary. So if you haven't had a chance to read those pages, I would encourage you to do so. And again, that section can be found on pages 13 through 24 of the large bound document. As I said, Bill's going to cover much of the financial highlights, so much of the stuff in the middle of that document is really what he will kind of touch base on. But I did want to point out the last tab of the document, that's starting on page 133, it's labeled statistical section. This is also a really important section of the document, I believe, as you'll find a lot of historical information. So starting on page 133, all the way through the last page of the document, we have provided all kinds of 10-year trend information, starting with financial highlights as you move through those pages. As you continue to kind of thumb through, you'll find trend analysis on property taxes for the last 10 years, long-term debt activity, operating indicators, number of full-time employees, principal property taxpayers. So really, I always think from any board's perspective, a wealth of information here at the back of the report under that statistical section tab. Item number four for this evening, then, is what we call our TIF report. So this is our annual required report related to the TIF itself. That does get filed with the Comptroller's Office on an annual basis. And we are required, in this document, on page 1, to in fact confirm that for the TIF, the financial statements as presented are materially correct. And then you'll find a couple of summary financial statements with regards to the TIF in particular, and then a final opinion that relates to compliance for the TIF. So did the TIF operate in compliance with state statute under the TIF Act, and were there any findings related to that compliance concept? Obviously, with a clean audit, I'm happy to report, we had a clean opinion for the TIF, as well as a clean compliance opinion, so no findings in relationship to requirements under state statute for the TIF itself. I was going to open it up for questions this evening. I know Bill has another bit to kind of follow up on, further in the agenda, but certainly I would be happy to answer any questions that the board might have this evening.
I have none. Sound very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Audience comments? I didn't know if we have anyone signed up for audience comments. Trustee comments? I have a proclamation. It's National Apprenticeship Week. Whereas economic growth in the nation and the state of Illinois and the village of North Aurora depends on the continued development of workers skilled in their chosen fields. And whereas apprenticeship programs help us fill this need by providing the means for the development of skilled workers and the cultivation of pride and workmanship. And whereas registered apprenticeships are vital components of talent and development in many high-demand and high-growth sectors, and are recognized in critical post-secondary education training for future employment. And whereas apprenticeship programs help enhance economic vitality and create a stronger economic environment by producing highly skilled and competitive workers. And whereas the village of North Aurora recognizes the strength and leadership displayed by apprentices, which results from the dedication and generosity of sponsors and participating employers, who provide meaningful education opportunities through on-the-job learning and related technical and academic instruction, which in turn serves to enhance the economic vitality of North Aurora. And whereas November 11th through the 16th, 2019, is being recognized as National Apprenticeship Week in North Aurora, the village of North Aurora appreciates the positive impact that apprenticeships have on individuals and businesses, which helps to improve the workforce in North Aurora and grow our economy. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Dale Berman, village president, and the Board of Trustees of North Aurora do hereby proclaim November 11th through 16th, 2019, as National Apprenticeship Week in North Aurora, and ask all residents to recognize the purpose and values of apprenticeship training for the economic growth of North Aurora dated this fourth day of November, 2019. Thank you very much. Our first item of business, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Dofino?
Yes.
On your new business, item number one, Mr. Laskowski.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the approval of a 2020 Road and Water Main Program Engineering Services Agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $247,866. At the October 7th Services Committee meeting, staff recommended the streets to be maintained under this year's 2020 Road program, and that list appears in the memo, and it's also on your screens right now. What you'll notice about the program is that there's streets that are colored in green and blue. The green streets are going to be typical road program streets, and the streets that are highlighted in blue, Maple and Elm, that are just west of the river there, are also going to have the water main removed and replaced on them. This year, the staff approached engineering services from a little different perspective. We issued a request for qualifications for civil engineering services for the road program, and when we did that, we received 11 responses from qualified civil engineering firms throughout the area. We evaluated those 11 responses, and then narrowed that list down to three. We interviewed those three companies, and the companies that we narrowed, that appeared on that shortlist, were HLR, Trotter, and EEI. So after staff evaluated the performance of those companies in the interview, and in combination with the qualifications that they submitted, staff recommended, staff was recommending EEI. And the reason we were doing that is because of their firm experience and their project team. Their firm has experience in Batavia, St. Charles, Montgomery, Oswego, Aurora, basically most of the communities up and down the Fox River, and they've done over $10 million worth of work in 2019 alone. So putting that in perspective, it's basically the road program of five different communities. So they have a significant amount of staff at their firm, and they're dedicated to primarily municipal projects. Their office is located in Sugar Grove, so they're nearby. The project team is a very important component of any civil engineering firm's proposal, because they may be the biggest firm or have the best services on paper, but if they don't dedicate the people that you expect to be on the job doing the work, you're not going to get the same product. So we interviewed their project team, and they do have the requisite qualifications we would expect. They have project engineers, they have professional land servers, professional land surveyors, professional engineers, as well as construction inspection technicians that have IDOT certifications you would expect for road programs like aggregate testing, hot mixed asphalt testing, and concrete testing. A couple of things they brought to the interview process we felt were innovative were the way they approached schedule. They had some interesting strategies on how to compress the schedule of the project, as well as addressing punchless items. So their theory on addressing punchless items was typically these are the items that get addressed at the end of the project. What their firm proposes is that they're going to address these punchless items as the project moves forward. So they're addressing them as they notice them, bring them to the attention of the contractor instead of waiting until the end of the contract. This is one of those things that can compress the project schedule and essentially save us time in construction inspection at the end of the project. So the next step after we were recommending EEI was to sit down with them as a group, our staff and EI staff, to establish what we felt the scope of services the village would need. So we outlined the construction inspection that we were going to need, what we expected out of the design. Their firm took that instruction back with them and associated man-hours with each of those activities, and based on then their hourly costs, we're able to calculate this cost of the overall agreement. Now, the cost is going to be a little bit higher than it was in the past for the engineering services that they're providing, but it aligns with the quality we're getting as well. So the hourly wages that their engineers are going to be a little bit higher than they were in the past, however, they are consistent with other firms that have been doing work within the village. So we have three other consulting civil engineering firms, and the hourly rates of those engineers also align with EEI.
I have a question. How do they line up with Rumpie Sharp?
They are, Rumpie Sharp is significantly lower than the three other firms we have in town.
You feel that the trade-off of going for a higher-priced firm is going to give us a better quality?
Absolutely. Yes.
And why is that?
Because I think the attention to detail that we'll see in the construction inspection is going to pay off. So we've had a couple instances where we've had to go back and look at some of the work done in the road program and redo it in some instances, and I think those are instances where with better-trained construction inspectors, we may, well, we will end up with a better product.
So when, let's say, for example, Rumpie Sharp contracts out to do a job, and we find that job unacceptable, do they go back and fix it? Do they correct it? Or is there an additional expense to the village? How has that worked?
So in instances like that, if we are informed of it, and if we notice it, we would expect the contractor to go back and correct it, and we'd also have to determine basically whose error it was. Was it a design error that occurred as a result of a poor design? Or was it something that the contractor constructed incorrectly, and it wasn't necessarily inspected at the time? Or if it was inspected and caught, then the contractor would be on the hook to take care of that improvement. So in one instance on Messenger Circle, we identified that there was a problem. We received a phone call from a resident, and then I went out and verified that the cross-slope of the street wasn't constructed properly, and that could have been a result, that was a result of perhaps the construction inspection and the contractor not necessarily being on the same page or getting the project completed the way it should have been completed. With the resident notifying me, and I having the skill set to go out and verify that, yes, it was constructed incorrectly, we were able to notify the contractor and have the work remilled and replaced at the cost of the contractor.
And you feel confident that this new company, IEE, or EEI, is going to give a superior quality of work?
I believe that they will have that ability to notify us of those problems.
So we'll have less chance of errors?
That's correct.
Less people complaining.
Well, the big issue is if you don't catch it early, and we pay out the whole program, and it goes out of that one-year maintenance where they go back and fix any of the issues, that road is our road until it needs to be repaid for 20 years. And so we end up on the hook going back there to fix it every time it holds water because it's not slow properly, or anytime it constructs because the subbase wasn't built properly.
So a lot of that you catch during the inspection period?
That's correct.
Plus, if it's a more thorough job at that first level, the second-level guy, that's a lot more, may not have to address much of that, right? There are some conversations with that too, so that could save us, because the first-level guys are more thorough and...
To piggyback on your point, or to kind of expand on it, EEI has a collaborative design process, which kind of means that their design engineers are working in tandem with their construction inspectors and staff. So the construction inspectors have the opportunity to talk to the designers who might not be on a field on a daily basis and say, hey, this isn't really how we construct it in the field, it's done this way, and they head off those issues in advance before it gets to that point.
So that could save us a lot of money.
Yeah.
So they're going to be inspecting it?
Correct. They're going to be doing the design and the construction.
And they'll be on site?
Yes.
All right. That's good.
So I guess essentially, then, this agreement's going to be broken down into two components, the design and the construction. The design's going to be that fixed cost, because we know how much, how many hours it's going to take to do it. The construction inspection cost is going to be slightly more variable, be a little bit variable, because it's going to be hard to pin down with weather and everything else exactly the duration of that project. But overall, I think the consensus from myself and Brian Richter and staff as a whole is that EEI's done good work for other communities in the past. We're confident that the project team that they're dedicating to our project is going to be superior, and so for that reasons, we're going to recommend EEI for the 2020 Road program in the amount of $247,866.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Well, you know, I was thinking today that one of the, one of the things that's sort of been missing is that if we have a committee meeting, and then it's brought to the, to the board, that we very seldom have any comments from the committee or the committee chairman. We always have comments from staff, but it might be well in the future, if you're on the committee or on the, or chairman of the committee, to make some comments or to back up the staff on any of them. Just a thought, that we don't, we don't hear much of reporting from our committees. We hear it all from staff, and so it's wow. All right, roll call. Mr. Dofino?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Item number two, Mr. Hanna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is a motion to receive or accept the CAFR as of May 31st, 2019. I just wanted to really quickly walk through some of the basic financial statements within the CAFR, and just take a couple of minutes to highlight a couple of things before the roll call is taken on that. If you go to page 25 on the screen, the first page in our basic financial statements is our statement of net position. So this is basically the balance sheet for the entire village. And you can see this includes both governmental activities and business-type activities. So since this statement is prepared on a full accrual basis, so similar to private business, you're going to see both current assets and capital assets. And then likewise, on the other side of the balance sheet with our liabilities, we have our traditional liabilities such as accounts payable, accrued payroll, but then we also have non-current liabilities, a lot of our debt, our pension liabilities, and our bonded debt liabilities listed here as well. So this is sort of the full balance sheet for the village taken as a whole, if you get a chance to walk through it and notice some of the numbers. Our total net position as of the end of the year is 119, just under, over 119 million. You can see down at the bottom there, and of that amount, 109 million is our net investment in capital assets, net of related debt. So we have various restricted amounts for various purposes based on external restrictions here, and then we have our unrestricted net position down here. And that's on a full accrual basis, mind you. That does not our traditional fund balance or funds available, that's calculated on a different basis in this full accrual statement. Then we have our statement of activities. This is essentially our income statement for the village. Again, this is calculated on a full accrual basis, using a lot of a very different-looking income statement-type format, where we actually show expenses first, then we have our program revenues, charges for services, grants, contributions, and then we actually list our expenses, actually, we list our expenses first here over here, and then our program revenues, and then net revenue, general revenues at the bottom. So on a full accrual basis, calculated like a private business, this would be our change in net position for the year, which was roughly 1.2 million, taking into account our governmental activities and our business-type activities. So this is our balance sheet for just our governmental funds, and this is on page 29. And you can see here, this looks more like a traditional governmental balance sheet that you would see on a monthly basis from us, calculated on a modified accrual basis of accounting, so cash basis essentially, with some tweaks to that. So you can see the end of the year, our assets, our liabilities, and our ending fund balances for our general fund, our Route 31 TIF fund, which is considered a major fund, and our capital projects fund, which is also considered a major fund. And then you have all our other non-major governmental funds lumped in one column. So this is just a reconciliation of the statement of net position to the balance sheet you just saw, to get from the full, modified accrual basis to the full accrual basis. And this is our basically income statement, budget-based type of income statement for the year for our governmental funds. So you can see at the end of the year, if you take all of our governmental funds in total, which would exclude our water fund and internal service funds, we had roughly 15.6 million in revenues, 15.2 million expenditures, and we had roughly change in excess revenues over expenditures of 417,000, and our total fund balances changed 566,000 for the year for all governmental funds, with total fund balances ending about 15.6 million. And that's another reconciliation of the two types of income statements. So this is our water fund, our business-type activities, our balance sheet, and our internal service funds, which is our vehicle and equipment fund, as well as our compensated absences fund. So again, those are calculated on a full accrual basis, so you have both capital assets within that fund, as well as any long-term liabilities, bonds payable, pension liabilities in that statement as well. So this would be the income statement for the water fund. As you can see, was 2.7 million in operating revenues for the year, 2.6 million in operating expenses, which includes depreciation, and we had a change in net position at the end of year of 703,000. That's our statement of cash flows, and last but not least, our statement of fiduciary net position. This is showing the status of the police pension fund at the end of the year, with assets of roughly 18.3 million. And if you look at the income statement for the pension fund that year, it was total additions of 1.9 million, expenses and benefits paid of just over 1 million, I'm sorry, just under 1 million, and we had a change in fiduciary net position for the police pension fund of 18.3 million. If you remembered back... If you remembered back in earlier in the basic financial statements, we were looking at the net pension liabilities. Those are included for both police pension and IMRF. And you can see those numbers up here. So we had 12.8 million police pension liabilities. So that'd be liabilities above assets that we had at the end of the year. And you see the same thing for IMRF, 1.7 million. And our OPEB liability, which was calculated newly for this year at 1.1 million for governmental activities. So I just wanted to walk through a couple of numbers really quick so that if you had a chance later on, you kind of had an idea of where some of the numbers are coming from and were located. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Would you do me a favor and just announce what page number you're on when you go from page to page?
Sure, I'm sorry about that.
I can't read the screen here.
Yeah, I'll do a better job of that next time. But all those things I went over are considered the basic financial statements, starting on page 25.
On the police pension, what percent are we funded on that?
So with some of the assumptions that we made, and we can go over those a little bit in the next item, we're roughly 59% funded, I believe, for the police. 59%? 59%, yeah. But like we talked about in our committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, that's a very healthy 59% because we're using very realistic assumptions as far as payroll growth, investment rate of return. So if we were to use some assumptions that maybe aren't realistic, we could, that number could be well upwards of 70%. But I like to call this a really healthy 59% when we're looking at the police pension fund.
Is that historically what it's been, 60% or so?
It's hovered around 62, 63. So we had some more assumption changes this year with our police pension actuarial evaluation. So we had to incorporate those changes, which resulted in about an additional 1 to 1.2 million in additional liabilities.
Is there a level that we're required to be at for that?
So the state requires us to be 90% funded by 2040. It doesn't really specify how we get there. It just says, you know, that's what your end game is. So we've had a lot of assumption changes over the last several years to try and get us on a level path to get there. Now, that's meant that we've had to allocate some additional resources for police pension now. But the hope is, long-term, we'll be in a much better spot later on by investing those monies now with realistic assumptions so we can be on a good path to get there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Caffino?
Yes.
Item three, Bill.
Yes, give me one second here to pull up my screen. Thank you. Item number three is regarding the official estimate of our property tax levy for 2019 for us and the Messenger Public Library. As the board is aware, there are two components involved in the property tax levy, one being CPI, which was 1.9% last year, and then the amount of new construction that we realized during the prior 12-month period. Based on those estimates, the village's total property tax extensions last year were $2,450,000. We estimate that those extensions could increase an additional $56,000. So we are looking at recommending that the village incorporate a levy to capture those amounts in the upcoming tax levy. And that would be a levy of $2,550,000 to make sure that is potentially realized. The other item concerns the village's debt for the Messenger Public Library. This is the first, this is the last payment that we're going to be making towards the debt for the Messenger Public Library. So our bonded debt levy is going to go down from 544,000 to about 413,000. So that's a decrease of about 30% just in that bonded debt payment levy. So even with the increase in the general property tax levy, the effect of that reduction of 130,000 means the total estimated property taxes to be extended to the village next year would be a decrease of about $73,000. So we would estimate an additional decrease next year once there is no more bond payment to make on the Messenger Public Library debt. And in that case, we would anticipate another significant reduction somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 350, 375,000 dollar decrease in the total village property tax levy in 2020 next year. So it's sort of a two-year step down that we're looking at for that bonded debt levy. The other final piece is the Messenger Public Library, and they have passed a resolution, as indicated in the attachment, of 1,867,050 for their library levy. So this is just the estimate at this time. The actual property tax levy ordinances would be submitted for village board approval in December.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion?
So can you just clarify, last year, we did not take the PTAL increase, correct?
Correct. We set the levy so that we would essentially realize all the new construction value in the village that we received, but we would give up the CPI increase.
Okay, are we able to do that this year as well?
That's not our recommendation, given that the new construction number was so low this year of really only generating $10,000. Our EAV for new construction was only about just over 2 million. And with our police pension valuation going up about $180,000, we felt it was appropriate to levy for the full amount to help offset the cost of that increase in our police pension levy.
So you're saying that the offset of the bond retirement from the library wouldn't put a dent in that then?
No, because it's two separate pots. We can't transfer the authority of that bonded debt over to the general levy. So while it'll be a good thing that the total amount will be a decrease, they're really two separate and distinct things that we can't really offset anything with.
And the increase in EAV wouldn't hold those numbers flat then for us if we were not to take the PTAL increase?
It's something that we, if we had a really significant increase in EAV in a future year, then yeah, I think looking at the CPI factor of this property tax levy calculation is something we could take a look at then in the future.
Do you happen to know what the increase was over last year?
For CPI?
No, for the increase in EAV.
In EAV, sure. Hold on one second.
Because if it's greater than the 1.9%?
Yeah, so the, it was 2.3 million in new construction EAV. The total EAV in the village is estimated to go up about 6.25%. But most of that's an increase in current property value. So we're continuing to see really solid increase in current values of property within the village. This is probably the sixth or seventh year that we've seen that increase.
What is it to our benefit then? If our EAV has gone up 6%, why do we need to take a 1.9% PTAL increase?
Because the, an increase in the current property EAV doesn't impact what your extensions are. The only two things that impact what your possible property tax extensions are are the CPI factor, which was 1.9%, and then allowance for new construction and a couple other factors as well. So the total amount that is available to be levied and extended by the village is really dependent on just those two factors. The change in the property value of current property, existing property, whether it goes up or down, doesn't really impact that calculation.
And is your recommendation based on the fact that we have, you know, Lincoln Valley going in and we're anticipating a lot of new construction upcoming?
There's anticipation of that. We're really looking a little bit more short-term, really just looking at the police pension valuation number. That was probably the biggest thing. And then sort of taking a step back and regrouping next year and seeing what the numbers look like.
Well, you know, I'm a big proponent of not not increasing if we don't need to increase. And I almost think we need to, if we can give one more year without taking it, especially knowing we've got a 6% increase, and then take that recapture back going forward with the new development, that would be what I'd like to see.
Any other discussion?
No.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
No.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Caffino?
Yes.
Item number four, Bill.
Thank you. Item number four concerns our annual renewal for liability, workers' comp, and property and other related coverages. We've been with, been with the IML RMA, which is the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association for a number of years. They've been providing coverage to us at a very competitive rate. This is the second year in a row that that coverage is not going to increase in cost at all. So it's remaining at a net cost to us, including a discount of $293,610.24. For a while, we participated in what was called the MinMax program where you can potentially pay a little bit less upfront, but then you might potentially pay more in the future if your claims exceeded a certain threshold. That used to be in sort of a 2020 program where it was a 20% savings, but 20% exposure on on costs. But they really, they changed that several years ago to be 15% savings, but 30% potential increase in additional cost. So for a number of years now, we have not participated in that program because of the two-to-one risk reward factor on that. So that is why we're recommending just a normal contribution be paid for our annual coverages of $293,610.24.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Caffino?
Yes.
Trustee Gailey?
Yes.
That concludes our new business. I have no business. I have no comments. Committee reports? Trustee comments? Mr. Bosco?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
No report.
Our village departments, finance, Mr. Hannah?
Nothing further.
Entity developers, toth?
Yeah, we issued the permit for the UFC gym over at Town Center between Target and JCPenney. They're anticipated to open for business in January and they are currently taking membership sign-ups. If you want to go ahead and over there and sign up for the gym. Also, too, the permit was submitted for the American Eagle Bank. They're located on the northwest corner of, it's actually Oak and Orchard Road. If you recall, they got site plan approval back in 2015. They did submit for permit, which was approved. The project was later put on halt, and so they've resurrected the project and they're for permit right now.
When do you think they're going to construct, start site?
They've been discussing the idea of going for a foundation or only permit just to get things going quickly. I'm a little apprehensive just given the the history of the property. But also, too, once we get all the information we need to move forward with an actual building permit, then we'll assess that. But they are looking to move pretty quick.
Springtime?
Yeah, if they were to get the foundation in, it could be probably summer, I would assume.
You should buy the one down the street. Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Chief?
No report, sir.
Public Works, John?
Leave collections on the west side this week and we'll be on the east side next week.
There's no executive session. There's no cow. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?